Thanks to those online for joining us. My name is Nate Formulari, I'm the Deputy Commissioner at the Department of Housing and Community Development. We have a couple team members, we'll introduce themselves in a minute. And Eric Filcorn is here, he is with the Chief Recovery Office with the State of the Mar. We are here to talk about the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding that we got. That's sixty seven point eight million dollars that's coming to the state. We have posted our draft action plan online. And we're here to go through that plan and take public comment from you folks on that. We have held similar outings in Hyde Park and Montpelier. So for some of you that have gone to those, you're gonna hear a lot of the same stuff tonight. But we're glad that you're coming to hear us out. As a matter of housekeeping, thanks to our friends at GNAT. This is being streamed live on YouTube. And I believe their Facebook and other platforms as well. And we also have the Microsoft Teams going as well. We've put a link, or we're going to put a link on YouTube. If you want to come over to the Teams virtual, so that you can see the first one, get to the question and answer session. That will be there in the chat as well.
So tonight, we're gonna talk about timelines for this money. The breakout of the money, how we're envisioning the different uses and the eligible uses for the money. Nothing you see tonight is final, this is why we're doing this. This is a draft document, it will be submitted to HUD in the next week or so. But we wanted to make sure that we got your comments before we submitted any final form. The other thing I'll mention is it is really public comment versus deep questioning. We're gonna try to answer questions, but we honestly also don't have all the answers. So if we get to a question we don't know the answer, we'll log that question and be sure to try to get back to you folks. But we might not have all the questions. But we're open for all your comments on how the money's being spent or how we're envisioning it being used. The numbers you're gonna see tonight are rooted in data. Using FEMA data, SBA, Small Business Administration data, to identify areas of the state. We looked at unmet need. So what have folks gotten from FEMA or other sources? Could be state funding as well, and what need is left. You're not gonna see all those numbers in these slides, but if you go to our action plan online, all that is detailed more. So these numbers weren't just picked out of thin air, or locations that were focused on. The other thing, the other headline I just want to lead with is this sixty seven point eight million is not enough money. And when you look at the way, you're gonna see how HUD kind of boxed us in in a certain way. It's just not gonna be the answer to all the problems that the state's facing in terms of our long-term recovery. So I just wanted to emphasize that, we're trying to do the best we can. But there's just no way this batch of money is gonna solve all the problems. So our mantra is prioritize, prioritize, prioritize. And I would say for all the communities out there, really, as you're hearing this and seeing the breakouts of the number. Think about how you're gonna prioritize, what are the top two, three things that you're gonna wanna come in for? Because, you know, especially in this region, due to HUD, we just don't have a ton of money going to spread around. So prioritize is our message. With that, I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you Nate, and good evening everybody. Thank you for those that came out in person and those that are with us virtually, online. Attending our virtual public hearing for the CDBG DR, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. I will be doing a large part of the talking here as we work through the slides. At any point, if I rattle off a handful of acronyms and you don't know what I said or what I meant in the alphabet soup. Raise your hand and just let me know and I will define the acronym. Nate just introduced himself, myself, Patrick. And sitting directly next to me is Anne Carleen Crowell, our Director of Federal Programs at the Department of Housing and Community Development. Quick little agenda of what we're gonna kind of work through, a quick introduction to CDBG DR. The action plan timeline, the components of the action plan, we'll hit at a very high level. And then we'll get into really the bones, I think, of what we're all here to discuss and hear about. And that's the allocation overview that we've received from HUD. And the proposed programs that we are developing as a result of that allocation. And the application process, and how, and how that'll go. And then we'll open it up to public comments. I'm hoping to only talk for about fifteen, twenty minutes and get through these slides relatively quick. So that we can have a larger discussion regarding the use of funds and how our programs are proposed. So CDBG DR is defined by HUD. I think the big takeaway from this definition is the long-term recovery aspect. And, and the mitigation really, and restoration. And the reason I put this up here is I think some folks might be thinking, why does HUD provide disaster recovery funds two years after the disaster event? For this one was in July of two thousand twenty-three. And really, the purpose is that these funds are not really to be a response to disaster, but to be focused on the long-term recovery. So they come after FEMA has come into the communities and then HUD makes their allocation. To really look at that long-term recovery aspect and meet those unmet needs that FEMA was unable to do in their immediate response. So the allocation we received was in response to the July two thousand twenty-three flooding events. The disaster, presidentially declared declaration disaster. It's DR forty-seven twenty is what we received the funding for. Some of the funding requirements that HUD, that comes through with these, with these fundings is the projects that we do fund have to have a direct tieback to that disaster, that DR forty-seven twenty, that, the event from July two thousand twenty-three. At least eighty percent of the funds that we distribute and disperse must go towards, or into the HUD identified most impacted and distressed areas. And there's a slide a little later on defining that, but HUD defined that as Washington County and Lemoil County. We do have the opportunity to identify the remainder, that twenty percent, if we so choose, into state identified most impacted and distressed mid-areas. Which we have done, and you'll see that delineation in a little bit. And then the other big piece, that with these DR funds, so with the regular Community Development Block Grant Program. It's really tailored towards providing benefit for low and moderate income individuals. And that is the same with the disaster recovery funds that come out. And at least seventy percent in aggregate of all the projects that we fund have to primarily benefit individuals of low, moderate income. This graphic is just a really quick show of the flow of funds. So at the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, we administer the regular CDBG program, Community Development Block Grant Program. The funds are allocated to us on an annual basis, on a formula developed by HUD. So when Congress and HUD make the allocation for CDBG disaster recovery funds. It kind of automatically goes to that grantee within the state Agency of Commerce and Community Development to administer the DR program in conjunction with the regular CDBG program. One little thing to note, I think, on this graphic, is that typically with the regular CDBG program. We can only provide awards and grants to municipalities. But with the DR funds, we are allowed to do state-direct grants. And I think a little later on, we'll get into some of those eligibility requirements. And state-direct would be basically non-municipalities. So a quick little timeline as to how we got to where we are. In December of two thousand twenty-four, Congress by vote made an allocation of about twelve billion dollars to HUD for the disaster recovery program. HUD took that, put that into their formulas, and provided an allocation announcement in January, on January twenty-first. Which is when we were notified of the sixty seven point eight million that was gonna be coming to us. HUD quickly stood up a handful of webinars. We attended the first one on January twenty-eighth. They were supposed to be rolling for about four or five consecutive weeks to explain the new universal notice that was put out and the action plan that we have to develop. Well, in early February, the universal notice was withdrawn for revisions in order to meet and match new presidential executive orders that were starting to be signed in January and February. So that kind of put us behind a little bit, working blind. But we still maintained our diligence and continued to meet with stakeholders and meet with folks around the state. We held, as Nate mentioned, outreach meetings in Hyde Park and in Montpelier. The revised universal notice finally came out in March, and then, of course, they decided to revise it a second time. And finally, we're working off a version that was finally published in April, on April fifth. We were able to finally sit down and have a really good technical assistance launch with HUD. Specific to the action plan that occurred in early May, on May first and second. Our hope was to have had this done back in March, but due to the delays and the revisions to the universal notice. Everything was kind of put on delay. I should also note here that as a result of those delays and the revisions to the universal notice. When the original allocation notice came out on January twenty-first, I believe it was ninety days that we had to submit our action plan to HUD. Because they pulled it back and made revisions, they granted a sixty-day extension automatically to all grantees that were awarded allocations, which would then put the action plan due by the end of June. So our, with us, the work that we continue to do, as I kind of mentioned, blind a little bit, but working without the revised universal notice. We continue to push, and we're actually, with the submission, hopefully next week. We're actually thirty days ahead of schedule, based on that, that extension that was granted. Once we submit the action plan to HUD, HUD has forty-five days to approve and take action. Inaction by HUD is an automatic approval on day forty-six. If this all goes to plan, then we should have an approved action plan by July seventh. HUD will then gather their materials and develop their grant agreement, which they'll then send to us, which we hope to have by August first. With that timeline, we would then be opening up applications sometime in late summer with our first funding round. Looking somewhere around October, November. We are very committed to making sure we get our first funding awards out before the end of the year. Just quickly, the components of the action plan, it kind of starts off with that executive summary. Speaks to the disaster itself, the specific overview goes into those most impacted and distressed areas, those mid-areas. Where HUD defined Lemoil County and Washington County. And then we used our assessment of the unmet needs and mitigation needs assessment, which comes in that second session. To then inform and identify our state identified mid-areas. Section three of the action plan is the mitigation needs assessment. We've tied that directly to Vermont's two thousand twenty-three State Hazard Mitigation Plan. So we are working in step and very closely collaborating with Vermont Emergency Management, VEM. And the Central Recovery Office as well, to ensure that our plan matches their plan. And then section four is really the bones and what we'll kind of get into next, in the next handful of slides here and really discuss. But breaks down the allocation, how we've decided to split the awards and the program that we've developed based on the sixty seven point eight million that we have to split between the different programs. So our allocation HUD provided, it's actually, it can get a little confusing, but I'll keep it super high level. Fifty-eight point nine million, and then as a result of that, there's a new push within Congress for this mitigation set aside to work on continued resiliency and continued mitigation. And so they take that fifty-eight point nine million, took fifteen percent of it, and that's the eight point eight. Added those together, and that's how we got our sixty seven point eight million to work with. HUD identified Washington County and Lemoil County. And actually, the way they identified it, they really just identified the town of Johnson in Lemoil County. But we, through our needs analysis, unmet needs analysis. Were able to work with HUD and expand not just the town of Johnson, but to incorporate all of Lemoil County as a HUD mid-area. So eighty percent of that sixty seven point eight million is required to be spent within Washington and Lemoil County. And that equates to a little over fifty-four million. The remaining twenty percent, we have opened the door for the grantee identified mid-areas. And we've established those to be Orleans County, Caledonian County, Rutland County, and Windsor County. Just a little graphic to kind of also a visual, to see where those HUD and grantee mid-areas are. And I didn't pull up the map, the weather map that we have in our action plan. But if you look at the weather map and the way that the pattern of the storm really came across the state, it really comes. I mean, if you put these two graphics together, it would be directly under the most intense part of that weather map that you would see. So we're pretty confident that I think we really picked the most impacted and distressed areas in the state to be available. So our sixty seven point eight million, we have split into these one, two, three, four, five categories, I suppose. We're allowed to take five percent off the top for our administration costs. We have six years to spend, not just obligate, but expend all of these dollars. And that's what those administration costs are gonna be going towards. And I think we're also planning to staff up a little bit in order to help us administer the program. So that's where we're gonna be using our administration costs. We have a planning program, housing infrastructure, and then the mitigation set aside program. What's unique about the mitigation set aside, it is the one pot of funds, the one program that actually does not need that direct tieback to the two thousand twenty-three disaster forty-seven twenty. And that allows some flexibility to really look at some impactful regional mitigation and future resiliency projects that may not have been a part of the disaster. But through the studies over the past couple of years, it's been recognized that if we do maybe a flood storage or, you know, a riverbank stabilization project or a restoration project around the river corridor. It will have a drastic impact of lessening future events. And so that provides us that flexibility to do a project like that, that doesn't need that direct tieback to the disaster. Our maximum minimums within each of those programs that we've established at this point. Five hundred thousand for planning, I think. Yeah, some of the comments we've received thus far, I think that might actually, we're gonna bump that up. To the full two million at this point. To really open it up for some large planning, regional planning opportunities. Housing and infrastructure have the same max and mid at ten million and five hundred thousand at this point. But that's certainly open for discussion, and that's what, we're hoping we might receive some comments tonight to see if those fit what people are envisioning and thinking of. And then, of course, with the mitigation, we can't go up to ten million because we've only allocated four point nine to that category. But if a really great project comes in and says they need the full four point nine and it's gonna have a real regional benefit, we would be open to potentially using the full amount for that particular project. The next few slides go into each individual program with a little bit more detail. So with planning, the idea is to provide funding for communities to access technical expertise and professional research. to access technical expertise and professional resources needed to complete planning, feasibility, pre-development studies. Some things might include engineering studies, watershed hydrology studies to study the water flow and how the rivers react to those flooding events. And then looking at local mitigation plans and also long-term disaster recovery plans for municipalities and regions as well. Under the housing program, we're really looking to fund the construction of new affordable housing. We have existing housing that was damaged for both single-family and multifamily units. And what's also important here to recognize and understand is that if we were, if we get involved and we do anticipate getting involved with some water sewer infrastructure projects, that when those are in direct support of housing, that that falls according to HUD under the housing program, which is why housing is that, has such a large allocation at this point. And then the infrastructure program, again, looking to fund infrastructure projects, bridge, culvert improvements or replacement, water sewer infrastructure. But again, like I said, if the water sewer infrastructure project is in direct support of a housing project that's going in, that would then fall under the housing category. Water sewer infrastructure here would be for like community-wide type projects or sewage treatment facility that might need some mitigation work or some assistance. And that brings us then to our mitigation set aside. And again, as I had mentioned before, this is really about flood plain restoration, flood storage. You think of things like maybe a dam removal or brownfield remediation for a commercial buyout. You know, those items that really speak towards lessening the impact of future disasters is what this program would be for. And then the last couple of slides are for speaking towards the application process itself. So there are a handful of application thresholds. They mainly mirror a regular CDVG, Community Development Block Grant Program, where a valid authorizing municipal official or authorizing official at a nonprofit or for-profit entity, I suppose, for that matter. And then they would have to also adopt a resolution for that authority to be able to submit to us. Public hearings are still required for the disaster recovery funds, just like the regular CDVG program. We'll be looking for, with these thresholds as the applications come in, that the project does have a tieback to disaster forty-seven twenty, that the project is located in the HUD or state identified mid area, and that they meet the national and state objectives as put forth by HUD, which are going to be relatively, I suppose, easy to do. And we will certainly work with folks to fit a project idea into that CDVG box. We're open to those conversations to ensure that your project is eligible by the time you submit an application to us. And then probably with the disaster recovery funds, the most important aspect of all of the DR funds that come out is we need to ensure that there's no duplication of benefit that occurs so that we are not paying for or reimbursing an entity that had already received funding for the same project from a previous funder, whether that's FEMA or a small business association or private insurance that was received. So there will be affidavits that are going to be required for each project to show and outline all of the funding that has been received thus far for this project being proposed. And then making that unmet need statement saying that, you know, maybe it's a three million dollar project, but they've only received, you know, two million thus far. And that there's a gap in the project of a million. And that would be the unmet need that we would be able to fund with the disaster recovery funds to come in and not duplicate the funding resources that have already been received for the project. We will be holding a competitive application process where applications will be submitted and administered through our online grants management system called Gears. There'll be review for thresholds initially. All projects are subject to NIPA, which is the National Environmental Protection Act. And as a result, they'll be required to complete an environmental review, which is all done through our office. We have an environmental officer and an environmental specialist as part of our program that will help all projects work through the environmental review process. All applications will be scored. We do have a small team that we're developing to do the scoring. So it's not just going to be in-house with the Vermont Community Development Program or the Department of Housing and Community Development. But we're looking to collaborate with Vermont Emergency Management and the Central Recovery Office as well, to ensure that there is a small team that's looking at these and scoring all of these projects so that we can prioritize as best we can on the most impactful projects out there. And then eligible applicants. So as I mentioned at the beginning, typically with the regular Community Development Block Grant Program, we are only allowed by HUD statute to provide awards to units of general and local government. I had that in there with the acronym because we refer to them as UBLUGs, which is just kind of a funny phrase. But those would be any incorporated Vermont municipality, so towns, cities, villages as well. If that village has a governing body and is an incorporated village, would be an eligible applicant. And then we are allowed with the disaster recovery funds to do state direct grants. So we'd be able to fund directly to public or nonprofit organizations, for-profit businesses, organizations, as well as community-based development organizations. The eligibility criteria for those state directs and even municipalities as well is that there needs to be a demonstrated capacity within the organization to be able to administer the CDVG DR funds. Since this is, they are federal funds that are flowing through, we need to ensure that the organization has the capacity to take on these additional funds. They need to be registered on SAM.gov and have a unique entity identification, a UEI number. The business or entity would need to be registered to do business in the state of Vermont and registered on the Secretary of State's website and be in good tax standing with the state of Vermont. And so demonstrating all four of those would make any public or nonprofit or for-profit business eligible to submit an application to us for a project that they might have. And then, as I mentioned at the very beginning, we are very committed and motivated to ensure that we get our first funding round in before the end of the year. We want to be making awards as quickly as possible because we do have a six-year timeline to expend all dollars, the full sixty-seven point eight million. So we're hoping to make that first funding round sometime in October, December, with applications due to us about six to eight weeks prior. So we have the ability to do any underwriting as needed, convene our group of scorers and score the projects appropriately. And then with any available funding thereafter, we would be looking for a second funding round, maybe in the winter two thousand twenty-six. I don't think, I think the thought here was probably three to four months after the initial first round. So probably sometime February, March. And then with the third funding round, again, three to four months after that, all dependent on the availability of funding. I think we would be ecstatic if we were able to award all sixty-seven point eight million in that first funding round, but we recognize that's probably not going to be a reality, knowing just kind of where certain projects are in their development. But that is the goal. And that kind of concludes my quick rundown of the action plan and our proposed projects and split of the programs that we've developed.
Yeah, great. So available for comments now, let's start in the room. I made one mistake in my overheated comments, but I'm going to repair right there. I want to, I just want to call out James in the top corner here. He made this meeting happen for us tonight. I want to thank the Western Bureau of Health, GMAT TV. Sorry, I didn't lead with that, we're grateful to be here today. So thank you for making your space available, hugely helpful. We're just going to try to get the, I can also just put that into mine, if you want. So are there, okay, are there, I'm going to go here first, Chris.
Mine's a quick clarifying question, Chris. So just within those different, I think you called them programs, but infrastructure, housing, and
Planning.
mitigation set aside, planning. Are you trying to meet the eighty percent and the seventy percent requirements for LMI and for mid within each of those categories? Or is that aggregated in the total, you need to make sure this overall eighty percent, seventy percent? Like, could they be a little imbalanced within the categories of the requirements, you guys?
Seventy percent can definitely be a little skewed.
Okay.
The eighty percent definitely has to be in the HUD mid.
Right, because that would be eighty percent of planning, eighty percent of housing, eighty percent of whatever. It's have to be eighty percent overall.
Eighty percent overall.
I was curious, so looking at where the rain fell and where the damage was, while we coordinated northern Windham, while Wabu was in the middle. Not within the town, but like one of the area, Jamaica. So that's all from the black one, more here.
I just, there wasn't sufficient unmet needs that showed up with the data that was presented to us through FEMA SBA and insurance claims. Hey, trust me, we are combing through a lot of data, mining. And we actually have a consultant that's working with us. And I was on a call earlier today with our Department of Financial Regulation that just is overwhelming to go through all this data and trying to sort through where we are. And that's what, you know, is the preponderance of what's come forward for us.
I'm just clarifying, I'm asking, just to be aware.
Sure.
For like everything else, in the response to follow-up, it's been this kind of cluster, as Eric can kind of tell you, I'm not putting you on the spot, but it's been like western clustered with London area and Jamaica. So that's the reason why I was asking, kind of just kind of off the wall. Suddenly it stops with that the border. And so that's why I was curious.
Yeah, I think, and thank you for the comment. I think primarily we've looked at them at county level data, which is why all, like, so Wyndham County just didn't rise to the same level. But we'll certainly take the comment and see if it makes sense to identify particular zip codes that are right on that border of the counties to see if the data kind of, if it makes sense. So thank you for that comment, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Patrick, your last sentence was all dependent on funds available.
Yes.
And that, before this began, I was wondering, what is the potential for clawback on this sixty-seven point eight million that would make all of this move?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, well, you have had an answer about that earlier.
Can you use the microphone so that people can hear?
Sure, thank you. That we have been told that this is already an escrow and it will not be clawback. And we have already been very fortunate to even been given our allocation for our regular program as of yesterday. So the funds are flowing for us in all corners of the program in every which way. So rest assured, we will have our sixty-seven million. And they are pushing us every day. We get several emails about where are you with your action plan and giving us additional information and providing us additional training. So they're, you know, right behind us on this. So, yeah, thank you for asking the question.
Everything she said and he said. But I just want to, you know, from our perspective, them pulling the guidance back and then reissuing it twice to get it right with the executive orders, we felt was a good sign that, you know. And as they reissued this guidance, the HUD secretary is saying, we're trying to expedite this for folks. So we're feeling good about this pot of money with all the uncertainty around so much else.
And just for a little point of clarity, what I meant by dependent on funding availability within those slides was what remains of the sixty-seven point eight million that we have not yet made awards of. That's what was meant by that.
Yeah, like, I think what he said, he hoped that we would have, you know, enough demand from everybody pushing forward applications that our full sixty-seven million would be out the door. Well, unless our administrative funds we still need to hang on to so we can appropriately administer them for the next six years, monitoring and all of that. But I think, you know, there's projects that have to get queued up appropriately. So I think we'll probably have a couple of rounds. But, yeah, that's where we're going with that. Yeah, are there questions online?
We do have some questions online.
But let's, yeah, we'll go online after this.
Is there a requirement for municipal project to have a match?
Oh, thank you for that. I didn't mention that, I guess specifically. But no, there is no match requirement for any of these project, applications that come to us.
All right, we're going to jump online real quick and then we'll come back. So in order of hands raised, I see Adam Grinnold, you're up.
Hang on, Adam. Is he muted or is he not muted?
What's going on?
Nothing coming out of David.
Oh, uh.
Oh, in Teams, audio output on Teams. Sorry, Adam, sorry. One sec, one sec. All right, try now, Adam. Oh, that's, try again.
Aren't you glad you weren't first now, Seth?
Sorry, give us one more second.
That was me. Try now, Adam.
Well, I need to.
Um.
Um, um, how can individuals apply for those grants?
It's a, we would go through an organization. Yeah, so it would have to go through an organization. We wouldn't. Or municipality. We uh wouldn't really be entertaining uh direct grants to individuals. Due to the complexity of uh, of the funding source and the um regulations and compliance piece that has to go into it. Um, we would be looking for, um, if an individual does need assistance, speaking to a local organization, probably find you more need within there, because if you recall the minimum um award of five hundred thousand. So it'd be kind of grouping a, a handful of individuals together, finding an organization that has the capacity to administer the grant. Um, like a local capstone community action or um.
Okay, hold on.
A local nonprofit organization. So, yeah, yep, exactly, like South, South guy, yeah, would be eligible, yeah.
Is it you personally?
Yeah.
We were.
Maybe I can talk specifically and see what point you guys, as to where I have to take support.
Yes. Okay, so you got happy.
Okay, Adam. All right, let's see if this works for you, Adam.
Everybody, uh, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so thank you for uh tonight's presentation, it's great to hear. I was, uh, wanted to have a follow-up to Chris's question and maybe just provide a comment because in, in past hearings, we've had a similar discussion around the, the way in which the, the data is collected is impacting the regions that are able to apply for funding. Um, and while we may, it sounds like have an opportunity to uh change that here under this funding, certainly just going forward, finding a different way in which we can ensure that impact and unmet need is tracked in a way that ensures communities have access to these kind of funds should there be future events or future funding opportunities. So wanna, wanna flag that for, for going forward and advocate for any ability for other impacted towns to further advocate the, the unmet need that we, we see here on the ground, but perhaps to make it into FEMA's data. And I'd be happy to keep my phone on to be able to capture other people speaking that you may be able to hear if that's helpful from the, from the online folks.
Oh, well, I know.
Sure, thank you for that comment, Adam. Um, why don't we see if we can pick up Eli through your phone?
Eli. What, can you hear me?
Yes.
I couldn't hear Adam uh whole time.
Can you hear me now, Eli?
Yes.
Yeah?
I can, yeah.
Okay, my comment was just the um, the unmet need uh for the, for the region, the way in which the data is being collected by FEMA or somehow that we can report up is impacting the ability for some communities to access the CDBG DR funds. And I was just advocating for a, a different way to track that data and get that data into the hands of FEMA or um, you know, the, the team here in Vermont to ensure that all those communities have access to disaster recovery funds either this round or should some other, but in the future occur, those funds. There's a follow-up to Chris Cantwell's question.
Um, my, my, um, I put mine in the chat. I don't know if that helps with our communication issues. Um, it dovetails with what Adam um is saying a little bit. Uh, we just learned yesterday that um we have a large number of FEMA buyouts in Central Illinois and um they were going to be funded through FEMA, these uh phase ones um for uh brownfields. And now they're not going to be, so FEMA's going to get their guidance on that. Um, and I'm wondering if these would be a good fit for the mitigation set aside program. Uh, these are properties that would be returned to the front lane. Um, there's four of them that will be covered by FEMA because they're required. Um, all the others, buyout and guidance are required because they have history of contamination uh or adjacent to a property that does, uh, but the funding and liability is being left to the municipalities.
Yes, thank you for that comment. Um, buyouts are certainly uh on our radar as a, as part of the housing program. Um, since it, it, if it was a housing property, if it wasn't uh a housing property, then it would fall under the commercial buyout remediation. Um, but we have uh heard similar things, uh, not as recently as you said, just the other day. Um, but that our funds could certainly come in on the coattails of some of those FEMA buyouts uh and do the brownfield remediation of the property and restoration of the property back to its natural state. Uh, and then for those homes uh that were taken off the list uh of FEMA's buyout program uh would be eligible potentially for a full buyout under this program. Correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Let me make sure I didn't speak about the full buyout aspect, but.
No.
Um, and then, and, and just to, to kind of um finish that comment too, the, the other thing that these DR funds can um be used for is the non-federal match. So oftentimes FEMA will come in and provides up to seventy five percent of funding for a particular project and then require non-federal match to come in and finish out the funding stack. The CDBG DR funds are eligible to be that full twenty five percent non-federal match.
Seth Jensen has his hand up online and I just made him an attendee. Let's see if that brings him in.
Hello, everybody, can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Oh, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So, uh, Seth Jensen, Deputy Director of Villamont County.
No, I still got Adam.
Adam, don't hit that.
No, no, we're, I'm still on with Adam. We're, oh, no, there it goes. Now we lost him.
Adam?
Yeah, they lost Adam. We're, we're using Adam.
Adam, I just made you an attendee of the meeting, does that change? Say a word.
Uh, word.
All right.
Okay, word. Now, okay. So, all right, well, so we should be able to hear Seth then, right? Meeting with Seth.
Seth locked out for a minute, we'll come back in.
Seth, I hear you. So we have to go back to the phone.
Hang on.
I think you can hear one person at a time.
Seth may be. I'm gonna make Seth the presenter. I've given him all kinds of access, let's see how he does.
I'm gonna take it away, Seth.
Still not.
I can hear you, Seth. I think a lot of people online can hear you, but just not in your room.
Huh.
Do you have, should only one person be able to speak at a time? Can you take away Adam's?
Oh, take away Adam's abilities. That's crazy.
Everyone's hearing you.
Oh, Adam. Oh, sugar. Come, now you got to.
Seth Jensen, can you hear me now or can I hear you now?
Wait a minute, hold on, hold on. Wait up. We can still hear Adam.
Now we can hear Adam.
All right, Seth, give it a go.
Do you want Seth calling? I'll tell everybody later how to talk on the number. Or Seth, you call me.
Well, have Seth call Adam.
I just did the right line, I'm just like.
Very high tech.
Oh, I tell you, really, seriously. Well, don't stress about this. I don't want Nate to have a, he's gonna have kittens, he knows.
I'm quietly having kittens next door.
Well, don't, I don't want a whole litter.
Hey, Adam, here. Yep, here you are.
Okay, we got it.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead, Seth.
Okay, so I'm Seth Jensen, Deputy Director of Villamont County Planning Commission. Um, we've been off-grounded one way or another since the date of the flood. Um, I recall uh three thirty in the morning getting a call from a member of the Johnson Select Board asking if he should leave his apartment uh with his wife uh because he spent the evening helping the seniors in that same apartment building um evacuate and the water was now almost up to the stairs to his second floor. Um, so that, that is how it's been. Um, I wanted to ask a question in a prior version of this. There was twenty five million available for infrastructure. That seems to have reduced it ten million dollars. Um, I looked through the needs that we've worked with our communities to identify. Um, and in Villamont County alone have found at least thirteen million dollars of infrastructure. I understand the point you made about the extending of sewer and water to housing. Um, in some cases though, this is, infrastructure needs to protect the existing housing in some of our most vulnerable neighborhoods. Um, the Western Road Mobile Home Park and Johnson School Street in Wilka, um Mans Meadow Senior Housing, in Jeffersonville, all places where um, you know, people were evacuated from their homes or were seeing significant buyouts. So my question is, if the infrastructure project protects housing, existing housing, is it housing and therefore eligible for that seventy million? Or infrastructure and therefore limited to the ten million? And my comment is if it's the latter, um, the unmet need in one county already exceeds the amount that you are allocating. Um, and then we can just discuss that and I'll, I guess I'll stay on Chris's phone so I can hear the answer.
Uh, can you not hear us at all through when we speak?
I can hear you, um, but I suspect if I had Chris's phone on, I, there would be an awful feedback and it would be bad for everybody, so.
Well. Yeah, I guess my, my question is that if I'm speaking like this, can they hear me through Teams as I answer?
I guess I'll.
How, did I was on mute right now?
Yeah, to limit the feedback for that one. All right.
I guess I'll, I guess I'll, I'll mute you and turn Chris's phone real down, real far down unless I have a follow-up question back.
Okay, um, so, thank you for your comments first off. Um, second, um, yeah, so the, the, the uh reason why we made that uh initial switch from twenty five million down to ten million uh was due to our realization and guidance from HUD that infrastructure, as you had mentioned as well, um, in direct support of housing falls under the housing category. We've also been receiving uh many written comments online, or not online, but through email correspondence uh and just general correspondence uh over the past month where we are considering um already changing some of those numbers, um, maybe reducing down to forty two million for housing, fifteen million for infrastructure. Um, certainly understanding uh the increased need for infrastructure as a result of that consideration. And also just to uh kind of reiterate a little bit what Deputy Commissioner Formulari said at the beginning is that we know that these lo- these funds are limited and it's only sixty seven million and it's not gonna solve all problems. Um, so we are gonna have, you know, there will be a prioritization and certainly understand that, you know, there's, there's great needs out there and we're not gonna be able to meet every single need um that is, that is there. I hope that kind of answers your question a little bit, but certainly your comment is taken and um, the understanding that maybe the infrastructure at ten million might be a little bit low uh for the needs that are out there in the communities.
I, I think just the, the nuance, second nuance of that question being the if a water that serves housing is considered housing, infrastructure mitigation that protects housing, is that mitigation and infrastructure or is that housing?
Combining both.
Yeah, Seth, that's a, a great question. I think we're probably gonna have to go back to HUD for guidance on that. My initial thought is that if it's an individual property and homeowner coming forward, that that would be considered housing. But if it is more of a protection for the community at wide, that would be considered infrastructure. Um, yeah, like at a, a mobile home park, if it's in benefit of the entire park, that would be an infrastructure project. But if it's an individual home within the mobile home park, um, then it would be considered housing. But we will, um, it's a great comment, great question, and we will certainly seek additional guidance from HUD to make sure that we've got that correct.
Thank, thank you, thank you. And I, I guess just my final comment is if, if that is the case, if it's considered infrastructure to protect an entire mobile home park, can we up that number so we have the resources to protect that entire park? Um, because that would be a good thing to do um from the perspective of uh our region, I think.
Um, yes, agreed, it would be a good thing to do and we'll certainly take a look at that and uh re-c crunch our numbers based on the comments that we're receiving this evening uh into next week. Uh, comment period does end, I think, uh, May twenty first. Uh, so you have up until May twenty first to submit comments still. And uh, like I said, we are already considering um uh changing some of those num- revising some of those numbers uh to meet some of the needs based on the comments we've received. So thank you, Seth, for also making that same comment.
We have a. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Rob. Um, it's actually a, a similar kind of question along the sex lines, but around economic development. I'm curious, in the early iterations, if all the economic development was made, I'm curious about how the evolution of that shifted um, began, began to prioritize and been curious how that fits in with current infrastructure priorities. At some point there was a conversation that infrastructure that was in support of community long-term recovery, especially around economic development, would be considered in the infrastructure category. And I'm curious if that's also changed with the um elimination of the economic development category.
Sure.
Um, I, I, I think to answer that question, um, when we looked at, in terms of, there's a couple different economic develop- I mean, that's a big category, right? So in terms of like straight business support, we felt like, um, unlike Irene where businesses got no support, the state stepped up in a few different ways to offer direct grants to support businesses um this round, uh, which is in a good way has led to, we're trying to create a permanent fund for that moving forward in some ways with the legislature right now and VITA. Um, but I think the other reason why we wanted to see some of these, why we set our caps at ten million, um, we're hoping to see fewer projects um that have bigger impact. So I think though economic revitalization is not mentioned, I would say putting in infrastructure and housing um is revitalizing communities in some ways. So that's kind of where the thought process went in terms of like straight business support versus if we can get bigger grants out um that are, are funding housing projects and then the infrastructure, the community's gonna benefit from that infrastructure upgrade beyond the housing in, in some capacity.
Yes, Chris?
So, two ends of the vector. One, uh, I think it used to be that uh application development costs could be, could, could be built into the project costs, is that possible? And on the other end, um, especially for. And on the other end, especially for projects that are going to be over seven hundred and fifty thousand, require a single lot, can that cost be built into the project cost?
Absolutely.
Uh, yes to both accounts, and it's now up to a million, not seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, so. But yes, yes to both accounts, and when you put your application together, include those pre-development and those application writing costs right up front within the budget of the application, and communicate with us that that's your intent, so that we're aware.
Yeah.
And, and, for others who are high, have never applied for a grant before, can you say a little bit about, this is not your average application? This isn't like sit down over a weekend and?
Write it on the back of a napkin?
Right.
No, it's not.
It's definitely not, and, and especially the DR funds. As we're all sitting here scratching our heads, like, there are far more strings with this than we have ever encountered. I keep saying, where's Yenon? Must, we need them, because I was like, I don't know. I mean, like, seriously, the things that they've layered on to us, a hundred and ninety pages of regulations that have come with this, it's like a nightmare for us too. And we want to help you all through this. So, no, it is not, don't just sit down and think you can do it over a weekend, it's not. And for people who haven't done this, we are going to counsel you over and over again to hire a consultant. Hire a consultant.
Who's done it before.
Who has done it before, yes.
Not just a grant writer, does not apply for a foundation grant or something, who is all.
Yeah, somebody who has some CDBG regular experience, because this, you know, the DR funds are based on the regulations of CDBG regular, you know, fun, you know, our regular program, and then they build on those. So, it's somebody who knows that and also federal funding. So it can't just be, you're right, Chris, thank you, good, good point. Can't just be, you know, yeah, I'm just a grant writer that, oh, yeah, I've got this. No, it's not, I just got this, it's really, it's very difficult. And, you know, we can certainly work with anybody and help, that's what we're here for. We're going, that's why Patrick said our administrative funds are going to be hiring people to help us help you. So, yeah, I mean, it's, there's a lot to this, and we want to make sure everybody is successful, gets it right.
And, and for them, for the us, for you guys to help them, they're going to need that to them, really, the municipality, whoever, hiring a grant writer to work with your support, because this is more than like a select war volunteer or a planning commission volunteer, or a fire department volunteer, somebody's going to be able to.
Yeah, it's an all-in, yeah, totally.
And not just on the application and grant writing aspect, but the overall management of the grant and the project itself, because there are federal regulations and laws that go into, you're going to need to be tracking, Section Three Business Concerns, Davis Bacon Wage Decisions are a part of this as well. Uniform Relocation Act, if by chance there's the possibility for an individual or business to be displaced as a result of the projects coming in and doing the project itself. There's assistance there that would need to be monitored and managed as part of the project as well. So, yes, there's a handful of regulations and compliance factors that, that go into not just the writing, but the management and administration of the grant itself.
So you didn't know, Matt? You got a question?
Go ahead. So, and you mentioned strings. You also mentioned monitoring. So I'd like to know what kind of monitoring is involved and who's doing that?
Well, you're the head of that. Under me. So, well, the monitoring is under all the HUD guidelines that we're charged with, and it starts from the day you sign a grant agreement with us, and that is done very carefully, that we ensure that we're meeting all the compliance rules and regulations that HUD gives us, and that's going to be put in a grant agreement that you sign with us. And it follows along as you go along to do your project, and it's going to be probably, I'm going to say upfront, probably quarterly, and it's going to be like as your first requisition, for instance, and things like that. If there's building that's being taken place, as Patrick was alluding to, Davis Bacon Wagerate, I don't know if many of you are familiar with that. There's a lot of oversight that's going to be taking place. The oversight of this is going to be far greater than our regular program, because they've already told us, within eighteen months of us signing a grant agreement with HUD, they're going to come out and monitor us. And they, HUD, is not just HUD, but it's the Inspector General of HUD, is going to come out and monitor us. And I will just say, right upfront, we have been told in our training that we just took that each of our grantees that we sign up with is going to have to attend two full-day training of fraud, waste, and abuse training that we also have to train and go through. So, this is why I'm saying, so the unusual things that we've never experienced before. So, that's, you know, one more layer on that, you know, HUD's put on with these funds, but is to ensure, at the end of the day, if you will, back to Congress that everybody's managing the funds appropriately. And that's what we want, because I think far too long, over the years, everybody points back to Katrina, that, you know, the funds sat there for way too many years and they weren't used. And so, here we are, where we are, so, yeah. But other questions about that, do you?
Did I answer what you're?
No, I just, I mean, I'm used to writing grants and grant monitoring and all of that, but since you keyed in on strings and monitoring, it seemed like this is beyond what was normally anticipated.
It is, it is kind of. I mean, it's not your, I mean, I think you're, I don't know what kind of monitoring you're used to. What are you used to?
That's beyond.
Yeah, beyond compare, right? But, but you had a question.
Yes, I have two questions, if I may. One is on the seventy percent requirement that it must primarily benefit lower-income families, I guess, or areas. How was that calculated?
So it must benefit seventy percent low and moderate income beneficiaries? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm just quoting what somebody said.
Yes, sir.
Eighty percent must be from Loma del Rey and Washington County. Seventy percent must primarily benefit lower and moderate.
Yes, in aggregate, seventy percent of the funds must directly benefit low, moderate income individuals. That is, that, that's based off of HUD's income information, so.
That's a national objective.
Yeah, that's one of the national objectives, that will be ensuring that the, one of the eligibility criteria and thresholds of the application when received. So that would equate to eighty percent or below of the median income for the county. And that can all be found on HUD's website. Easiest way, actually, the way I always get to it, is I just do a quick Google search, HUD Income Limits 2025, and it brings you right to the HUD's website and where they do that calculation.
One other question. Is this a reimbursement grant or is it a, you'll get the money first? You have to send the money, you get the money?
Yes, it, it will be a reimbursement grant, and disbursements will, requisitions will be submitted to our online process, our online system, where we will be, I guess to kind of tailor back to some of the monitoring questions, we'll be reviewing every invoice and that the entities were paid, and then we reimburse based on that.
I just want to clarify in response to your question. You said HUD income based by the county.
Yes.
County, not the town.
Yes, it's county, so you'll, you'll, when you go to their calculation, their website, you'll be selecting your town, but when they, when the graph, the graphic or the table output comes, you'll see that it's based, they identify the county as the income level, despite you putting in your specific town.
Thank you.
So, given that you said the grant application process is very humorous and recommending that you hire a consultant, would you be offering guidance as to whether it's worthwhile spending the money on a consultant and spending the money and spending the time to apply? So, for example, you know, a, a project here in Westin, could we get some guidance as to whether it's appropriate even to apply? I mean, I know you can't say, I know it's a competitive process, and, and, and you can't say yes, you'll definitely get one, but you could perhaps say, you're not even eligible, or, oh, sure, that would bother because we have seven others that are more compelling than yours.
Absolutely, we're, we're willing to have those conversations, yeah. Like you said, we're not going to say yes or no to it, but we can let you know based on the way that you're presenting the application or presenting the project as to how competitive that application might be once submitted.
Or whether it's ineligible.
Or, yeah, or on the other side of that, whether it's ineligible, yes.
Yeah.
Do you ask, or ask?
No, I guess a follow-up. How, because we're talking about not only townwide, but also 501(c)(3)'s, et cetera, et cetera, how would a 501(c)(3), for example, be able to access that information to see if it was even a competitive type thing before you spent thousands of dollars trying to put together an application? How, how do you specifically access that expertise and just say, oh, yeah?
But you're not testing us.
Give, give me a call.
Oh, all the.
I mean, that's the, yeah, email. We're going to be, like I mentioned earlier, hiring up a few
Sure.
specific disaster recovery staff, and we'll have those initial conversations with you or with the nonprofit or for-profit business, absolutely. And then be able to steer you, provide some guidance as to what we think best direction for you to go.
Thank you.
And I don't, this is more of a comment, I don't know, well, at least I would, I'll ask to see if you agree with this. I mean, the stakes are high, and you don't want to say somebody's word for it. Oh, yeah, apply for the grant. I mean, the town may actually want to put out, you're going to have to put money up, or your town, whatever you are, you're going to put money up front to apply to this.
Yep.
So, I would suggest put out an RFP, asking for qualifications and references showing that people, that, that the grant writers have successfully applied and gotten these grants in the past. This isn't something where it's somebody's cousin who lives in Manhattan did this one time in nineteen sixty-four, and it'd be great if they, I mean, this is, this is, this is, because, because also the skill set has to be current, not something like, last time, our, at a REB commission, we helped develop a grant, one of these, it was in twenty-twelve, I think. I would not feel comfortable trying to support development of this. And just so you know, too, it took us, I think, like eighty to a hundred hours, probably, to develop an application. So it's about eight to ten thousand dollars for us to develop an application for a town. So that's the kind of money you're talking about here. Would you, is there anything that you disagree with?
Yeah, no, absolutely, and, yeah, putting on an RFP, one of the, I guess to go back to one of the monitoring things, there are procurement standards for, in order to be, for the contract to be eligible to be reimbursed. So that's the, the direction that the organization or municipality is going to go with an RFP. It would be worthwhile checking in with us to make sure that the procurement process that you're going through meets the standard, so it would be eligible for reimbursement. We also do on our website have a list of, I guess I'll call them qualified consultants that have worked with our program in the past. I think they're just listed alphabetically, because we can't say, who, we can't prioritize or recommend, but we can say these, we have a list of consultants that have worked with our program in the past that are local here in Vermont. And then there's also, I should also, good time to mention, Vermont Housing Conservation Board has a grant program called REDI, R-E-D-I, I forget what that acronym stands for, but they primarily make small awards to assist organizations and municipalities to hire grant writers.
Which is very helpful.
Yeah, to, to increase that capacity for the municipalities and organizations to, to be able to write some of these complicated grants. Yeah, one comment?
Yeah.
Just going, just going back to this idea of the ten million dollar grant cap, it, it does also provide an opportunity and the flexibility that it doesn't just have to go to a municipality like our regular program. That does provide some flexibility for you folks to come together as a larger group, and then you can bring more resources to bear through that, or if there's a foundation that, that could help you, or. So I just would encourage you to think about, you know, given that you can apply pretty high, if you come in as a group, that, that could be helpful for technical assistance.
Seth Jensen has his hand up, he's also muted there, so.
Seth, give it, give it one more shot here.
You're live. So I wanted to ask a question. All right, no more feedback, we better?
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Awesome. Related housing. We have several kind of smaller, missing middle-esque type projects that started before, or at least permitted, but now construction costs have made private sector doing of them not repeatable because of increased costs and tariffs and things like that. So, generally, CDBG and federal funds mean needing to do like twenty or more units to be effective. There are some permitted projects that are smaller than that, and I'm wondering if the strings of DR are different such that it might be viable?
Well, we could participate in something that's less than.
He's asking if the strings are different, though.
Well, the strings, the strings aren't necessarily different, Seth, but I.
You mean, but about bringing the, the housing online?
Yeah, about, about filling that funding gap of projects that are just kind of in limbo at the moment but are less than twenty affordable units. I mean, I, I think the, the regulation with CDBG is that at a minimum, fifty-one percent of the housing units would need to be made affordable.
And that's still the case.
And that's still the case here, so certainly if you had a, a property that was, you know, call it eighteen units, which is less than twenty, as you mentioned.
Twenty are affordable and thirty.
Oh, yeah. We would need to see at least ten of those eighteen benefiting or being made affordable to LMI individuals. But bear in mind, too, that that fifty-one percent beneficiary for that individual project does count towards the seventy percent aggregate of the overall sixty-seven point eight million. So you can, you can see where some of the complexities here, where us as administering these funds need to take all these things into consideration. But something to be aware of here with these funds, as stated in the Federal Register, the affordability period with the CDBG DR funds is a twenty-year period. So once the DR funds go into a project, it must maintain its affordability for a minimum of twenty years.
Got all that, Seth?
I, 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 I do, I think. So, if we were able to come up with an innovative model with, say, a group like Habitat for Humanity or Downstreet to make those smaller projects work, then yes. But, the rules that sometimes make those smaller projects challenging are still there. So, we should get creative and do beautiful things if possible.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think we would be open to being at that table with you to think creatively, to see how we might be able to fit some of these ideas you're having, some of these projects within the CDBG box, as we like to call it, and, and, and help you creatively think about that path forward for these projects.
Great, thank you.
I was just going to say, I'm handing the phone back to Chris, I just want to give a shout out to Chris Campney. Sorry, please go ahead.
So, so I would just, this is a comment, not a question. You've been fielding lots of questions very well, and we're told you're not going to be able to answer them, you've done very well. But this is a comment, and that is that, and this comment was made at a, at a public meeting in this room several months ago, Chris, I think we were running that meeting, but, in any case, seems like there's lots of money available. Yes, not enough, but there's lots of money available. Wonderful opportunity for us, but there is just this incredible frustration that we are, you know, we are volunteers, we have no experience with this sort of thing, and, and, and you've heard that frustration.
I'm looking to cry, Seth.
In trying to access this money. So the more that you've, and, and you have said that you are available for advice and assistance, the more you make that clear as to how that assistance is available to us, how we access that assistance would be very, very helpful. You know, who, who do you call? What is the number? You know, what is?
Who do you call?
When you put out the, when you put out the call for applications, you make it clear, how, how do these small community organizations access that help that we're in need? I'm delighted to hear that you have a list on your website of. Because you have a list on your website of consultants.
Of consultants?
Yay. But tell us that it's on the, you know, on our website, you can find whatever. The more, the more obvious you can make it, the better it would be for all of us to be able to access this great treasure trove of money.
Yeah, thank you very much for that comment. We will absolutely be taking that into consideration. When, once we do get our full grant agreement from HUD and we put forth, or I should say maybe when our action plan is approved. But anyway, towards the end of July, at that point, once we know for certain that these funds are there, even though we already are certain that they are there. We will be putting out some form of notice of funding opportunity. And yes, thank you for that. We will be sure to include that contact information and links back to our website as to where these resources can be found. And I'm perfectly comfortable saying it, my name is Patrick Scheld, S-C-H-E-L-D. My email address is simply patrick@scheld@vermont.gov. And comments can also be submitted directly to, we have, and this is the last slide I kind of didn't quite get to. But we do have a dedicated disaster recovery email setup. It's accd.cdbgdr@vermont.gov. So that's Agency of Community, Commerce, Community Development, ACCD.
We do have that up.
Yeah, so there it is. Thank you, Nate, for, for putting that up. So there's direct contact for us as well and to receive additional comment through May 21st on the plan.
And as I said, we will be, you know, hiring additional staff. And that's, I'm trying my level best to get the ability to hire them now to be able to get them educated into this whole process so we can start. They'll be able to rock and roll and provide technical assistance, you know, right out the gate. Because that's, you know, what we, you know, I'm hearing this and I know that's the case, you know, as Chris is echoing. Because, you know, I witnessed this from Tropical Storm Irene, that, you know, the people that are least equipped to do this are the ones that need it the most. And so we're working hard and fast and trying to be able to do that. So, thanks.
Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah, yeah.
We have an online question real quick about BABA.
Oh, it's, no, it does not. Yahoo.
Becky, BABA does not apply. BABA is Build America by America, which is a federal, new federal regulation that's making it very hard to accept CDBG dollars because you have to use American-made products, which are more expensive. When our money goes in to a project, it affects that whole funding stack that needs to follow that. So to not have that restraint is a good thing on these dollars.
Yes, we were very fortunate to have that taken off of the, I think because they saw the foresight to this, because of, yes, the, being able to move the funds along quickly. Yeah. Yes, Chris?
I just wanted to know that in my asking kind of leading questions about it, it's not to be scary. I don't want, so I send you into, I'm not going to go crawling into a briar pack to catch a rabbit that you can't catch, or once you get it, like, what the hell do I do with it now? So that's the, it's just, because I hate to see towns and businesses and others go for funding.
And fail.
Yeah, because then you put all the energy and effort into it when there may be another rabbit that's easier to catch. I'm sorry to go in with metaphor himself. But, but that's, that's, but, you know, it may be, put your time and effort into some other community fundraising activity. Or better yet, like your municipality, what I'm increasingly saying is bond the project. Get the state and the feds the hell out of it. Just bond it and do it. And, and because sometimes you do it a lot faster, a lot cheaper, especially in this environment where profit price is going to keep increasing. So just act, move, do it and roll, you know? Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, and a great comment. Now, my, I'll respond with, so the key components of our application is based on need, impact and feasibility. So what's the need for the project? I mean, it's, and it's got to be more in depth than just, we need housing. And so, so part of what you're speaking to, Chris, is doing that surveying of ensuring that those households that are going to be impacted, that are in need, are of low, moderate income. And doing that surveying and ensuring that and making sure that comes out in the application. Part of the need assessment is, is this the best possible solution? Have you vetted other possible solutions? Have you looked at other funding sources? And then on the impact, not just that these people are going to be housed, but, you know, what is, you know, extrapolating that impact out a little further to make your case that this is going to make us resilient to future disasters? These are going to be putting people out of harm's way. And then the feasibility aspect of it is what is the capacity of the organization or the municipality to be able to administer these funds, to carry out the project the way in which you just described to us in the application?
So you said that 80% is going to go to Memorial and Washington County, correct?
Yes.
So does that mean at a maximum? Or are they also potentially eligible for more than the 80%?
They are eligible for more than the 80%. We have, it's a, it's a minimum, actually. 80% is it?
At least a minimum.
Yes. 20% is the maximum that we can spend outside in the state grantee areas. So that...
That's not, that's not a state decision.
Right, that comes state from, straight through the Federal Register.
And, and then that scoring matrix that you're talking about using when you get applications in, is that something that's going to be available on a website so that we have an idea with us, you know, so that you know what your bid is created?
Yes, yes, it's currently, it's currently in the action plan as part of the draft. And I think based on the comments that we've been receiving throughout the past few weeks and hope to receive in the coming week, we'll be making slight revisions and tweaks to that scoring matrix to make sure it captures exactly what we need out of it in terms of prioritizing projects.
So that 80% is allocated for those two counties. You're looking at potentially bringing in London area into some of the areas and taking a look at those things. By doing that move and sharing your action plan, could that potentially change through HUD's decision? Like, say, you see a bigger need in a different area, could that potentially change through your action plan and having that?
No, they're pretty prescriptive on the HUD identified area. That came with, came to us through the allocation announcement and said, here's, here's your most impacted and distressed areas based on the high-level data that HUD had received through the collection of FEMA data. And that's very prescriptive on their end.
So this area, this, these counties are really looking at 13 million total. Which is why I led with prioritize. And maybe that takes, you know, coming together as a group, prioritizing, maybe that takes some of the scariness away on, on what your projects are. Because they're, you know, we don't, we don't love it, but there just isn't a ton of money available in this area.
The other counties for Rushland, Windsor and?
Forlans.
And Caledonia.
And Caledonia.
We have taken that comment and we'll go back to HUD and we'll, we'll see if we can get zip codes out.
Yeah, zip code perhaps.
And thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly why we're here, to hear those comments, to get that and ensure that we are taking that, another, another look at our decision and the way the data has presented itself to us and seeing maybe if we need to get a little bit more granular and look at individual zip codes as a result.
Of Windsor County, pulling that into Windsor.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Are there other questions online that maybe folks want to chat? If they have any, you can drop them in the chat. Or any other, any other comments in here. You know, I think there'll be a lot more to come, as we've talked about, once we actually have an application. Right now, we're really just trying to get HUD to say, yes, this plan works so that we can get to that more granular detail for you folks.
Right, and I guess that's a good point there to be made, that once the action plan is approved, we do have the ability to do some amendments to it. So that to say that if the buckets of funds, the way in which we have spread out the allocation between housing and infrastructure with that 47 million and 10 million currently identified, but that first round of applications we received, you know, as I think Seth alluded to earlier, that there's a high need for infrastructure projects. And say we get, you know, $20 million worth of applications, we do have that ability to go back to HUD and make what's considered a substantial amendment to our action plan. It does require some administrative work on our end and HUD's end, another 30-day comment period. But it is a possibility that we could shuffle some things in that regard as well if we've, if we grossly missed the mark with the initial action plan that we submit.
There's a couple of questions I can...
So coming on, from online, so it's open to all Windsor County towns. We originally heard, let alone Weston only, but confirming at this time you're saying countywide. That's, that is correct. And as, as this gets into it and the scoring matrix, I mean, the towns that were more heavily damaged are going to score higher for need within the county. But yes, we decided to do county. And then this, the follow-up question, sounds like nothing for Addison County. At this time, no, Addison County is not included in this plan.
I'm not seeing anything else online unless folks want to quickly get something into the meeting chat. And I am, I am so sorry that the audio did not work. I thought I had this all dialed. I'm embarrassed. So I apologize to everyone online. Yeah. Anything else in the room?
Other than thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No, it's certainly our pleasure to be here and to do this and have, hold these meetings and have these discussions. We greatly appreciate everybody here and the input that was provided in person, but also virtually. And certainly want to stress what's up on the screen now. Please, if you have other thoughts as you're leaving, you know, we all have those Hindsights 2020, man, I wish I said this, or as I like to call it, my pillow thoughts sometimes as you're laying in bed and trying to fall asleep and thought runs through your head. Please submit comments to the email address on the screen, accd.cdbgdr@vermont.gov. We'll be accepting public comments on the draft action plan until May 21st. The draft action plan is posted on our website as well, which is, well, the URL is, it's there. Unfortunately, it's not linked, but it's, if you go to accd.vermont.gov, follow your way to Community Development, Housing and Community Development portion of ACCD's website, and then look for Community Development and the Vermont Community Development Program. And you'll see a banner right across the landing page for Vermont Community Development Program that'll direct you to our disaster recovery page within our website.
So Eric's going to put out a sheet. If you want to write down your name and email, we can follow up with these slides and with those links, just to make that look in here for you guys.
And just to let you know, not that I'm somebody who would wait until the very last minute to apply any comments, but the slide is May 23rd.
Yeah, thank you. It's exciting, yeah.
Just want to give you a heads up.
May, May 23rd is when we're hoping to submit the action plan to HUD. So thank you for that. That was with us.
No, no hopes. We are.
We are submitting to HUD. So that was, in my development of the slide, I had the submission date in mind. My apologies on that.
I would just like to congratulate you for your ability to say CDBG. So is Google Lisa, any comments?
CDBG.
Thank you.
And if you're agreeing about it, I'll let you know.
Yeah, we do submit that comment.
Just, Chris, you've been up and down so much. Would you mind letting, just certainly let that around, have everybody just?
All right, I think we're going to log off for the online folks if there's no other questions. Thanks, everybody.